Seven P M. A sign of public comment is now closed. And. If you might. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the committee law. General of Tampa thirty eight, seventeen eighteen, and then governors. Sorry, is my attention? Okay, sorry. And the governor's March fifteenth twenty twenty order goes in strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Kurt Holmes. Declaration of emergency dated March fifteenth twenty twenty, this meeting of the school committee will be intended via location. We'll post audio recording, audio video recording, transcript of other comprehensive records of these proceedings as soon as possible at the meeting on the city's local access government channels. And with that, I told us this today, we're twenty fifth of the central school meetings order with a move of signs to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'm gonna bear, I'm gonna bag everyone's support, parents, we have a lot to do and a number of special guests, so we'll take some things out of order. All right, Superintendent Skipper, we call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Certainly. Doctor, Doctor Phillips?
Here.
Description?
Here.
President McLaughlin?
Here.
Mayor Kurt Tony?
Present.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Barish?
Here.
The tone?
Present.
Doctor Ackman?
Yeah.
Miss Norman?
Here.
All members of the press, if you have a question.
With that, I'm going to. Ask. Take some, as I said, to do that order. We'll start with, we have Rich Raitz here to give a brief building update. Mr. Raitz?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Santiago, if you can, let me share my screen. I can prep the slides. Here we go. Just as a quick reminder, our upgrades fall into a few categories. Ones that are necessary for occupancy and those that are additional work that will further improve air quality. Filtration and ventilation are non-negotiable, and this is consistent with the Harvard School of Public Health. It's also important to remember that what we're doing is making these schools safe for full-time, in-person education. There are some uses of the buildings that are permissible at lower densities and for shorter durations. Which is why there have been some things happening in the building, and those are sort of allowed on a case-by-case basis. In consultation with myself in terms of the building and Director Drug Cress of Health and Human Services in terms of the activity. Um, it is an update for where we are in terms of completion. All of the filters are installed in the group one and group two buildings and are progressing pretty well for the group three buildings. Retrocommissioning, which is review, is the process of going through all of the school ventilation systems to make sure that they are operating as designed, so that we are then achieving the air exchanges and air filtration that we, you know, establishes our threshold are working correctly. We've brought that as far as we can go on the group one and group two buildings have started in on JFK in the Winter, Winter Hill Community School. We've not yet stepped foot in the Healy, we'll be getting to that likely next week. Um, in that process, and again, you know, the reason why we're doing this is making sure that all these building systems are operating as they're intended. Um, we have found a number of deficiencies that need to be addressed by our on-call maintenance contractor. Um, we have brought these items to their attention. Um, unfortunately, there are a large number of them. And, and our, the rest of our work under these contracts are at a standstill until Honeywell, that contractor adequately addresses those, those issues. Uh, we had a meeting, I escalated this to the mayor, first thing, and I don't mean this in any Eddie Haskell sort of way to ingratiate myself to my boss, but Mayor Kurt Tony immediately sprung into action, started making some calls, escalated with Honeywell, escalated within the city's structure. We've got the legal department, DPW purchasing, all fully motivated and focused on this issue. We have Honeywell's attention and are scheduling a meeting with them to expedite that work. Um, and we are also working through some technical details at the east. Um, the portable filtration units are in process, the carbon dioxide monitors, which are a way to make sure that this works on an ongoing basis or in process, and the wellness rooms are in process. In terms of schedule, again, you know, it's, it is difficult to project a hard date by which all of this work will be complete. What we are trying to do is make sure that we communicate with Superintendent Skipper and all of her staff, keeping them up to date on this process. We want to be able to open these schools as quickly as possible, acknowledging that anytime you do construction, there is a lot of risk. Their supply chain and getting the materials, recall, you know, from a couple of months ago, there was risk or there was a long lead times around filters. Again, we sprang into motion at that point in time, and the city did everything we could do to minimize that time. We, we worked that risk and reduced that risk. Um, we're now in, in a risk of sort of unforeseen conditions. Once you start doing this work, opening up those machines, never know what you're going to find, and we found a lot of things that need, um, addressing. If we were relaxed, we would simply say, oh, well, this is going to impact our schedule by a month or two. Um, and that is not how we're managing this, this project. We're bringing all of our resources to bear on it to reduce that risk, but it remains a risk. Um, and there's, you know, labor force, luckily, we haven't been seeing a lot of COVID nineteen impacts on our labor force thus far, so we've been able to get the work done. But there's, there's a lot of different things that can impact our schedule. So with that said, the way we like to look at this is a, is a range of dates, optimistic and pessimistic. I'll set, set through where we are in each one of the schools. On the high school, which is a different animal altogether, being new construction. Um, we have finished all of the work necessary for occupancy, save one critical system, the stair pressurization systems. We are troubleshooting that, actively troubleshooting that. Um, Suffolk is bringing in national experts on this, this is a fairly new building code requirement, so there isn't a lot of expertise on it. They're bringing in their national experts. Um, we think we have the problem solved, we're mobilizing a solution to that. With any luck, that will get us over the edge and we'll be able to have occupancy this week or next week. But there still is risk that there's additional things to troubleshoot with stair pressurization tests. Um, so pessimistically, you know, we're looking for, that, that would last us, um, through, um, the February vacation. Um, Capuano School is one of the schools where we found some of the things that need to be fixed in terms of the air handling units in there. Um, so we've got an optimistic pessimistic range. Um, Capuano does have an advantage to it, that the items that need to be addressed, we could do a workaround on those and still occupy right after February break. Um, east, Argenziano and west are all in that category where we're working the maintenance issues and progressing along with the, with the other work at the same time. Um, so, you know, optimistically, those buildings would be ready right after February break, but pessimistically, we're, we're pushing on the completion date of that into mid-March. Um, Kennedy, we've got, we're moving along with that one. That's in a very similar category as the Argenziano, there are a number of items that need to be addressed in some big school. Um, but thus far, they, they seem to be like things that can be addressed. Uh, so that the dates on that one haven't really significantly changed since the last update. Uh, again, Healy, we haven't really stepped foot in that, so we don't have any change on, on that range as now. Winter Hill, we've started the work in there, some of the work that looks like it needs to be done in there is extensive. Uh, and that is an older building with older systems that are going to be more difficult to remedy. Um, so at this point in time, I'm projecting more pessimistically on the availability of the Winter Hill School for us to be able to address everything that needs to be done there. So again, these are, are ranges of completion or construction. Um, these are dates that we're continually communicating to the superintendent's office, SPS, and adjusting their occupancy plans accordingly. Superintendent Skipper can get into more detail if you want it on what that means for occupancy dates. Um, but generally, the plan hasn't changed much in the past couple of years, other than high level, we're looking for high needs. E L O in the high school, the Capuano, and then facing the other buildings thereafter, particularly targeting after February vacation and dates shortly thereafter.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, do you want to add anything to that before I throw the floor open to the questions?
Um. Thank you, Mr. Jim, I believe, and thank Rich for the update. As to the latest issues, I, I can report back, we've already been in contact with the city's contract maintenance manager, which is Honeywell of its own systems, and there is a meeting scheduled. Actually, I will inform Mr. Raitz, we just heard back, they're actually seeking to meet with us earlier. I can tell you all that I've spoken actually to the head of the whole northeast region. And they've committed to make sure everything is resolved in a timely way. I will report back when I have concrete plans, I want to see it laid out, you know, and I just want to reinforce again, as we mentioned, and try to be clear and open and transparent, these are the areas of risk, and any project, we certainly, because of COVID, we monitor. And sometimes we, as we get to the risk approaches, it's not as bad, sometimes it's great, and then there's always the unexpected when you open something up. The thing we get, we had to deal with, with filters, that was a tough one. I'd say we had to admit, we pretty much resolved that successfully. Uh, the one we're dealing with now, it's different from that, is we actually know clearly what it is. Uh, we have people on call, we're supposed to be responsible for that, they have committed to us. And we'll have the definitive answer on that, if we have any real concerns beyond what we presented this evening later this week. Um, and that's where we're at, but again, we are, just as a reminder, we're condensing a year-plus project into several months, so we're fully aware, eyes wide open, there are going to be some unknowns. We have an approach to deal with that, and we're dealing with that now. And we are making really good progress at this point, so I just want to thank Rich and his team for the hard work. I think everyone for their patience and flexibility and understanding, and we'll try to answer as many questions as possible. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Okay. So I think my first question, my first question is from Ms. description, Dennis Baton, Dennis Barish, and Dennis Norman.
Thank you, I had more of a comment than a direct question, but.
Go for it.
Thank you for that report. Is the comment okay, Andre?
Hmm?
Thank you for that report, as always, the detail is very helpful. I also just wanted to thank the city for giving permission to the schools to allow a few teachers and a few students for a few hours at a time to start meeting in some of these buildings, because I think it's really important. I think there is frustration in the greater community that we didn't do this earlier on. Sort of this feeling of like, okay, if the buildings were safe enough to allow one teacher and a few students to meet inside for a few hours, could we have not been doing this all along? So I just kind of wanted to make it clear to the public that we're really thankful that it's happening now, even if in retrospect, something could have been different in the past, if that makes sense. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baton? And I see you, you said questions, I think I'm gonna ask one at a time and then go back in the queue.
A little typo, Chair Green, so through you. Um, I guess there's, I guess there's a little bit of a combo, but I guess my first, my understanding is that from the administration, it takes three weeks to really initiate their plans. So all the plans have been created, but to contact families, to set up transportation, to engage with educators and figure out who's coming back. It takes three weeks to, to really launch into an in-person to meet a date. And right now, the February, we're right in the window of three weeks today for February twenty second. So February twenty second is the date for the high school. The, the outside date, the, the biggest, you know, the worst-case scenario date. How confident are you, through you, Chair Green, to Mr. Raitz, that that building will be ready on March twenty, Mark, February twenty second? So that the superintendent's staff has the time to plan and execute?
Uh, through the chair, um, there, there's no such thing as a non-zero risk in this business. Um, but given where we are and the fact that we have narrowed the troubleshooting down and are moving on this, we've done a preliminary test on that, that proves it will work in theory, now we just have to do it in practice. Um, I, I, I'm cautiously optimistic to give Superintendent Skipper the green light to start that plan. Um, similarly with the Capuano, um, you know, even though we don't have those systems up one hundred percent. Mechanically, we have a workaround for that, so even if we don't have a repair plan in place, and it's not fully executed, and all this work, front day is going to be on the roof of the building, so it's not like we have to worry about contractors being contacted to kids. Similarly, I, I think we've, we've got a good glide path for the Capuano. Um, the, the other ones are a little bit more complex, so I'm less confident in giving the green light to get a building.
Okay, thank you, I, I just wanted to make sure that there was good collaboration and understanding between the city and what the administration really needs, that three weeks, so for example, if the Capuano is going to be available March eighth, the district would have to launch their plans on February eighth to account for that week off in February, so that's the three weeks. So it's, it's, it's important to make sure that we're collaborating and connected on that, thank you.
To me, Skipper.
Through Mr. Chair, um, so again, thank you to Mr. Raitz and to his department, you know, for just great communication with us about the building stuff. Everybody's working as fast as they can. Um, we will likely be developing a plan that gives some buffer to this as well. So, you know, I think in our conversations with parents, it's likely not to be one specific day, but it's like to be a range of a week to two weeks, so that if something does go awry, people's plans are kind of thrown in the airs. And, you know, also for our educators, you know, they need time also to, to get in, to set up. Um, in some cases, we have to move specialized equipment over, so once we sort of have the all-clear to come in, then there's some things that we have to do in the buildings that, we've done a great deal of them already, but there is some additional stuff. So, um, again, we're going to look to try to do a range as opposed to a specific date. And then if we're able to do that slightly earlier, I think everyone will be happy with that. Um, but if not, then it's not leaving people, our parents, without a plan. Um, and, you know, just as a reminder, we still are in active negotiations around the, all of this, the reopening plan in the time.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Richard, thank you, Ms. Baton, Ms. Barish.
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo Ms. description's comments, thanking the city for making it possible for some small groups to be inside, especially now that the weather is particularly chilly. Um, in that vein, I've seen that the plan is to expand particularly with community schools, to expand beyond where they are now into more of the schools. And I'm wondering, given the situation with the Brown School, do you anticipate, and the fact that the Brown School doesn't have those big spaces like cafeterias and gymnasiums, do you anticipate, does the city anticipate being able to allow indoor use of the Brown School at all for community schools? And if not, is there space for them at one of the other schools or at some other building? Um, so that kids enrolled in community schools at the Brown School and those community schools' teachers who are assigned to the Brown School can also have some indoor space? Thank you.
Who wants to tackle that question first?
So from, it's, it's a good question, through the chair to the Ward Six council member. Um, so as I say, that the, the indoor spaces that we've allowed have been a conversation between myself, Director Cress, often Omar Bucili, to, to look at the occupancy, the head count, the space, the air turnover in the space. Um, we would have to look hard at the Brown, I think we would have to have a very low head count in a very short time span to occupy those spaces, because there is zero air handling. Like what we have going on in the other schools, is even though we're not quite up to the threshold where we want full occupancy, there is air exchanges and some filtration, right, so we've got a little bit more leeway, and we've got larger spaces available to us. Um, so, you know, I, I think that it does necessitate a conversation for either very limited use of the Brown Building or moving those to, you know, the Kennedy or one of the other schools.
Wait, let's skip her.
Yeah, to be mentioned. Um, so the A F A and CAP in east have their after-schools up and running. Um, Winter Hill will start this week, and Healy and Kennedy are slated to start next week. And then west will start before February break. Brown would likely, one of the active conversations will be at the west site or at the Kennedy. Um, and so we will be taking a look at that to see. Um, some of this will also be with the Kennedy with special education to know what will be running there. So that might cause us to revert more to the, to the west, so. Um, and community schools will be running over February break, if anyone was going to ask that. Um, so we'll work closely, the, as you know, with the Brown, although the classrooms are very large, there's no really, there's no space, there's no big space, so we've really, with community schools, been really trying to spread the students out, so um, we will likely opt for a different space for the Brown School for that purpose.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, the mayor was, visibly, did you want to add something to that answer, Mr. Mayor?
I think substantively, both the Superintendent Rich and the analyst, I'll just add that we will continue to look at the creative work and ideas and how we provide those services and more to the kids in the community. We know we have to strive to do that, I'm not going to rely solely on the bricks and mortars that are available to us on the present condition, so I commit, we're going to continue to work out of that to see what are the other opportunities in our community and alternative spaces.
Thank you so much. Ms. Norman?
Uh, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Raitz and the city, I, I know you're working hard on this and there are variables, but I, I also know this is, uh, these are kids and these are families. And I'm, I know that point isn't lost on you, but I can say in the last month, the number of kids that I have. My son's in the high school, so I travel a lot in that group, I understand our priorities and I'm not disputing those, but it's kids are disengaging quickly, and, and I don't know that we're going to get all of them back, and so the urgency of opening the buildings, I know it's not lost on any of us. But a part of that is having a firm date, as Ms. Baton spoke to, so that once those buildings are safe, we can quickly and effectively move back in. I know that we don't have a school committee meeting, next one isn't until the eighth, which is in two weeks, so the communication on this is so important, for so many reasons, we are in negotiations, but also giving educators and administrators time to, to implement the plan of how we get them back, but also I think families, that, that firm date would mean so much and to kids, so. My, my, I don't really have a question in there, other than to say that the communication of this, of once we have the firm date, and it needs to be a firm date to be able to communicate that, I know we have a town hall tomorrow, but we don't have another school committee for two weeks, so that is going to be um, every time we do this, and there's educators are making calls to families, that's, there's a huge uh, time and effort that is involved in reopening, uh, three weeks. That's a huge amount of work, so I, I am hopeful that we'll get that date soon and we'll be able to get in there, and then, you know, there will be no surprises, and I understand construction's complex, but um, I can't emphasize enough how excited we will all be when we have that date, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I, um, thank you, and I want to just say all the points are so valid to all the families who have added their comments, suggestions, expressed their dissatisfaction, anger, I, I don't know what they're going through, we're aware, it's painful. That, I will tell you, as you all know, and I know Ms. Norman knows this, because we've been on the phone almost regularly, we all have it, we feel it every day. I just want to be clear why we will never give a firm date until we're actually in there, because every day, let me just use an example, it's a double-edged sword, we're excited about the next positive step, we are in getting the building prepared, but when we open up that wall, we dig into that system, we're holding our breath, what issue that we don't know about is coming up. When you don't have a lot of runways, not like open, a building, a high, like a high school, I mean, this would actually, the conversations with the high school would have happened in August of last summer, if we didn't have COVID, as we get ready for a new school year or July. There's no runway here, and, but there is the reality, wherever we find that unknown, we have to deal with. So I'll be satisfied, there are no more unknowns when we actually open up the doors and kids are in there. Uh, and so until that point, I'd be disingenuous to give everybody a rich with a date, that's why it's a range. We're gonna, we'll have to make decisions based on how much risk is left. That's not a pessimistic view, we just want to be ethical and honest about the information we get, and we don't know, we're going to tell you, as you know, Ms. Norman, everybody knows. And, uh, we will spend no time, expense, effort to get this done, I want to thank Rich and his team, people can't see that work, they're on it. Every day there are issues that pop up, that might not rise a level of these meetings, but they pop up and you just hold your breath, it's not going to elevate. That being said, sometimes the issues aren't as bad, so I, I, I agree, the moment we can give a firm date, we'll do it. I just don't see that until we actually go in, we're just going to continue assess risk, and to every possible risk is diminished to a point that it's it's just a risk, whatever happens, we'll live with.
A follow-up, Chair Green?
Go right ahead.
Just to be clear, I, I, I agree, I, what my, my hope is for a firm date that once we know, because I think moving it when we, you know, we opened up and then there's more uncertainty, saying we're gonna, it, that's harder to keep regrouping, so I, I'm with you on the, we need the buildings to be absolutely safe, that's great. Uh, the only other comment I, I would add is, as you said, Mayor Kurt Tony about exploring other opportunity spaces, I would uh, ask that the high school students be considered, because they are not likely to go back to the, their own building, but they, uh, they need something to. And it will look very different than the community schools, and I'm thrilled for our younger students, but our older students, it, it's, this isn't easy on anyone, and, and they may be more self-sufficient, uh, but they are feeling it for sure, and I will leave it there, so any creative solutions at the high school, especially our seniors, if there's any way to get them together, have some sort of, uh, I don't know, sure what that would look like, uh, when it's warmer, if it's outside or inside, but our high school students are, uh, they're feeling it, and so.
My, my, for you, Mr. Jim, and my high school senior, just wanted to acknowledge a thumbs up to you, to Ms. Norman, for bringing that to my attention and stressing that, and I, again, I commit to all of you, to the public, it will not be a question of financial resources to do that, so there's an opportunity for us to be even more creative, what should that look like, let's give every kid that opportunity, and we will invest in it. Um, and we're going to need to do that throughout the school year and throughout the summer, to supplement as much as we can and make up for whatever was lost, and we are fully committed. And we are fully committed to that. We will write those checks. We will invest in it. We just have to do the work of planning it. I promise you, I'm all in it with you.
Thank you so much and congratulations to your soon to be your member of the class of 2021.
It's hard to believe. Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll own that Ms. Norman took a little bit of my thunder because I was going to ask about alternative options. And so I'm sort of curious through the chair to the superintendent, to the mayor, to Mr. Raish. Are there options that we haven't considered? I know we bought tents a while ago. I think we did. And, you know, to the mayor's point of not sparing resources, you know, if there's a way to use them and to, I, I think getting outdoor heaters, it would be easier now. I genuinely don't know. I haven't tried to purchase one. But I'm, I'm curious if there are, especially to the superintendent, I, you know, are there other things in your networks that you've heard explored that we haven't tried yet that you would like support to do? Does that make sense?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we, we did purchase tents and the tents will work with DPW. They're not snow rated. So the difficulty is you need to have, you need to have the ability to anchor them. So moisture in the ground and then snow are, are kind of the two key pieces. So we check in and we're going to be looking. We are going to be looking at March as a time that that could happen, when we could put them back out. In addition to RAC has tents, in addition to community schools. So in terms of using the outside, that's definitely an option. I think the other thing is the mayor and I have been trying to work on some alternative solutions, particularly for the high schoolers. And so we're, Mayor, I don't know if you want to elaborate, but we're, we're trying to think out of the box.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman. And please excuse me, Ms. Ackman. We had conversations and we reached out, not just recently, in the last few months, as we thought about reopening. And there's some logistics on reopening with private commercial property owners who have vacant spaces and some spaces that are unique that might offer unique learning. I would leave that to this educational experts or other experiential benefits to help all students, maybe in this case, high school. Probably better suited as we move a little further. Again, sometimes a space comes with the same challenges we have with a school space around your systems and so forth. But we are, we have a couple of leads in some other spaces and there are conversations we're going to continue to follow up on as to what we have for other resources for not just the rest of the school year, but summer months as well. And I'll leave the programming and educational components for the experts on that. I'm, my responsibility is to chase down the real property and location opportunities that the school department can consider. So yeah, we should look at, I think tents are great. Shouldn't rely on that. There are some spots and not a lot of partners in the community want to work with us. And then we just have to make sure that they meet all the educational or other requirements that come with teaching or whatever the program is we want to invest in.
That's right. And through Mr. Chair, just to, to wrap that. I think, I think the other thing is that one thing that is happening with buildings is that in some ways with groups one and two, they're kind of, they're, they're collapsing together. And so it's becoming more possible, even in waiting just a slight bit of time more to have students predominantly returning to their home schools. And this is not a small thing because transportation issues, getting back and forth, familiarity, teacher moves and how much work that is for the teacher and, and so forth. So that also means that the more we can situate in the home schools, the fewer classes we have to relocate to the high school, which means that there'll be some additional high school space and real estate that we can allocate back to the high school so that we can actually be able to get high school students in there. So that will all start to come together as, as Mr. Raish said, as the timeline shrinks and it becomes much more, less about the risk and much more targeted. That will help us in the long run to be able to kind of get more kids into the home schools and free up some of the real estate at the high school that we thought initially we were going to have to use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Barrish again.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Mr. Raish is still here, but I, I think it may be a question for him. So through you, Chair, ah, Mr. Raish. I can't believe that I forgot to ask, but it's okay. It's a separate question. Can you give us any information on the status of the Brown School? As, I mean, I understand that it doesn't appear on the timeline because it's a sort of a different project and a different level of, or a different degree of complexity. But can you tell us where things stand with the Brown School? Has the, the site review? I can't remember exactly what it's called, but has, has that gotten underway? Can you tell us where things stand?
Through the chair, yes. So we have started the fieldwork. We actually started with the Brown School. On the architects triple B were in there last week. This first step, they're, you know, basically just amassing dimensional information on these buildings. Surprisingly, we don't have as-built records for this 100-year-old building. So they went in with, you know, basically laser scanned the whole thing. And then moved on to the Edgerly and we'll be moving on to City Hall in 1895 this week. So that, that work has started. Right at this point, it's mostly just been dimensional and inventory. We'll start getting into the, the real sort of behind the walls investigation. Once we're done with the initial round of scanning, so we're probably about at least a week out from appearing behind the walls, but the work has started.
Go ahead, Ms. Barrish.
Thanks. Yeah, just a quick follow up. Can you just tell me a little bit more about sort of the process? So they've said they've, now they've done some laser measuring and inventorying. Can you just talk a little bit about sort of what's going to come next? And when you anticipate having some new information, you know, substantial information to share with the community about sort of the, the future of the Brown School as a physical building?
Yeah, um, to, to the chair, Superintendent Skipper and I did talk about starting to plot out a timeline. It's, it's a little difficult for me to shoot from the hip right now because this, the Brown School is now being managed as part of the overall building assessment. So there's, you know, half dozen other buildings that are in with it. You know, I do understand that we need to sort of fast track some decisions on that. So the, the school department can make decisions about next year. But I, I haven't, that, that tech team hasn't been able to extricate the Brown and think of this schedule for that. But we do anticipate giving a, a communication to the Brown School community. We're, we're hoping for shortly after February vacation to be able to do that.
Thanks.
You said, you want to add something to that?
I, I just want to add, this is going to be a lot of conversation. And let me clarify because people wouldn't normally know. We were finishing a new high school and we went through the Massachusetts School Building Authority process or MSBA, where we get a certain level of reimbursement. And that's how we did many, all the other schools in the last 20 years. Going back, actually the last 25, going back to the West Summerville, which was the first under that process. And I don't want to get too far off track. I would just say, having served at that time on the Board of Alderman 20 years ago, when we took a vote to move forward on a new Brown School and it didn't move forward for a variety of reasons. It all, it's, you know, the MSBA process is a long process. And I would submit to you all that K-6 school will not qualify in that process. At least it didn't then. It may or may not. So while we do an assessment of the building, then there comes another fundamental analysis of the school department, of the programs in the school, and that's another conversation. Then it's determined actually what we're building or rebuilding and how we finance it. So this is the first step. So we can't really get a timeline. We want to make sure that whatever we're building, we know what we want to be in that building down the road. And that determines what process we move forward, but this is a critical step in that first step of the process.
I believe unless there are any last questions, that concludes that report.
All right. I just had a quick follow up for Mr. Raish before we close out, if that's right.
Yeah, please.
About the Brown School. So, and I guess maybe this is also to you, Chair Green, through you. I'm glad to hear that you have an idea when you're going to be able to provide more of an update about the Brown School and kind of where you're going. And I also appreciated very much that the mayor shared some of the complexity associated. It's not just a, you know, all of a sudden we flip a switch and we, you know, mitigate all the problems in the Brown Building. But I just wanted to know if, I guess this is to Chair Green, if we're going to put this on a future agenda for school committee? As well as if it is on the future agenda, can we, Mr. Raish, I don't want to ask you to answer this now, but can we also follow up? Back in 2018, there was a bunch of building reviews done. And I don't quite understand the difference between that review and what's being done now. And so I just want to have a better understanding when we do the update in the future, that that port part is included, if that's possible.
And so, and so your question for me, yes, obviously, any decisions about the future of the Brown will, will be a subject of ideally much school-related deliberation. So we, I think we'll set up deliberation probably as soon as we get through the current. So yes, we will put out on the future agenda, but let's get schools open first. All right. Just to give everyone, because I just say, I don't think I have order, I'm just going to explain to people what we're going to do next, which is the report to students, then we're going to take one item from the personnel report, then we're going to do public comment, then we're going to take another, then we're going to take one item new business. So that, I believe our students are here. So if Ms. Contagio can unmute them so they, they can get their reports, that'd be fantastic.
Hi, everyone. I'll go first. So starting off.
Sorry, just for you to get started, but for people who don't watch every week, can you give your name and your?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm Brian Resinov, a 10th grader at Summerville High School. And I'll be reporting on student life. So the first topic that I'm going to report on is that the parent slash guardian and teacher conferences are on Thursday, January 28th. It's virtual from 3:30 to 5:30 PM. Second thing I'm going to talk about is that at Summerville High School, we're already starting our core selection process review with students during Class 1B, which is the first class of Week B, which is this Friday. We're doing that this Friday, January 21st. Also, this week is the last full week of the quarter, so grades are officially closing. And the second semester begins next week. And then lastly, there has been a school-wide survey given to students available on AspenX2, which is where we receive announcements and grades and et cetera. The survey is an opportunity for the students to have an input and a say on what we expect for the next principal of Summerville High School as our current principal, Mr. Lagambina, is retiring this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be reporting second. My name is Natalia Somran. I am an 11th grader at the high school. So the first thing I wanted to report was the Remote 7 survey. I have, have mentioned in previous meetings about students having issues with the Remote 7 class happening from 2:15 to 3:00. And a survey was sent out this week and it's available for students to put their opinions on it. It's available on Aspen and on students designated Google classrooms. And the second thing I wanted to mention is the Summerville High School Senior Trip for the Class of 22 has already started accepted funds. Students are able to set up payments that fit their income. And the trip is going to take place in Punta Cana in the DR. So many students are looking forward to that after this very unfortunate year.
That is some good news. Ms. Norman, she's got a question.
Hi there. Just a question about this, the senior trip for the Class of 2022. This is a trip that is not run through the schools, but is independently being organized by students. Is that, is that right? Because I don't remember seeing it being approved by us. So I just.
Correct. I'm, I'm sorry. The trip is by like an outside company since it will be already like out of school. Most students have already graduated. It'd be like in the summer. There's just a certain group of students who have already started sending out information for students to pay ahead to be able to afford it by the summer of 2022.
I love the planning and the initiative, but I just want the, everyone to be clear and especially our public that this is a trip that is being independently organized by students and is not being done through the schools. Nor does it, because of that, it does not need approval by the school committee. So because we do do a number of trips, not in the pandemic, that are done through the school. So I just think that's an important distinction to make, especially this is a trip that has happened many, 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 many years, but it is not done through the schools. But I, I applaud your organizing efforts.
You probably wouldn't have any problem getting chaperones for it, Natalia.
So this is a point of information for the audience to Ms. Norman's point. State law says that schools, that any overnight or out of state trips must be approved by the school committee. Those are happening right now, so we haven't done it in a while, but that is still.
Correct, and chaperone.
Right.
I was just going to add on that if you guys are interested in any more information, it is done by the Breakaway Beach Company. And you can search up on Instagram, SHS Senior Trip 2022, if you want any more information about it. Just to see what Class of 22 is up to right now.
All right. If there are no other questions from, from members. Brian kind of blew up the, the, the next thing. As Brian pointed out his report, Sibby Lagan, Sibby Lagan Tena has announced his retirement from Summerville Public Schools effective into this year. And I think Mr. Skipper wanted to say a few words.
I did, and I embarrassed him further and asked him to turn his camera on.
Never embarrassed with you, Superintendent Skipper, never.
So, you know, I, I, I know that Mr. Lagambina's retirement is something that we, I know that school committee want to wish him all the best themselves. But you know, as I said in my letter, it's with really mixed emotions that I, that I shared the news and accepted, you know, Sibby's retirement. Sib, you're a rarity in so many ways. You know, Sibby spent and dedicated his talents in life in one place. And in, for our good fortune, it was Summerville. He actually attended Summerville High as a student. He served as a teacher, a baseball coach, a class advisor, a mentor to so many people. He became a leader first as the Chair of the Science Department and he helped Summerville High to earn the 2011 Massachusetts Biotech Education Foundation's Innovative School of the Year Award. And then he became an Assistant Principal of Elm House. And now he's finishing his career as the principal, helping to see Summerville High School through its building project and on to a new beginning. Sibby's loyalty to our students, to staff, to the city span over 35 years. And, you know, to this very day, he's still, in every meeting, brings the same passion, the same commitment to service in everything he does. He's one of the most positive people I know. He has a can-do attitude like nobody else. He's authentic. He's student and other centered. He's visionary. He's a tireless worker. He's loyal and most importantly, he wants every student, every single one of them at Summerville High School to get the best opportunity possible. Under his leadership, Summerville High has launched the early college programming. They have, he's led Summerville High to the highest ever graduation rate near 90% and to the lowest dropout rate ever, which is less than, less than 1%, which is half percent. He's fostered partnerships and reached out into the community, two organizations, brought them in like Biogen, US Fire, On Root. And he's supported at every step our deep equity work, you know, that has been championed in the district, especially at Summerville High by the students and the staff. Sibby is one of a kind. He is, he's a rare find in a person and a professional that we will never replace, but we will always remember. Sib, I wish you and your family all the. Sib, I wish you and your family all the best in this next stage of your life. It's been an honor and I'm humbled to have worked with you and learned from you these past six years.
Mary, I just, I want to thank you and the school committee. Really, I'm very grateful to be provided with the opportunity to be the principal of Somerville High School. As you mentioned, I was a graduate of Somerville High School. And really, this has been a dream come true for me, right? Other kids may have had other dreams, but mindless to become principal. And you know, at one point, I never thought I would have it. And I just feel so fortunate that I was able to become principal at Somerville High School. So I want to thank you. And I can honestly say that the superintendent, the school committee, and the mayor, the support they've given to the school district has been absolutely tremendous. And you've all been great partners to the school system, to Somerville High School and to me personally. And so I thank you all, I just want to thank you. It's been a pleasure and again, it's been a dream come true for me. And unfortunately, I've reached the time, it's been 35 years. And I always count the years that I was a student at the high school, so we're pushing 40. But I wouldn't have traded it for anything and I feel, I just felt like I was blessed to have this opportunity. So I just want to thank you, thank you.
Ms. Norman?
There will be plenty of betting, Sibby, I'm sure, later in it. But I would, I can't pass up an opportunity to thank him, both as a school committee member, but also as a parent. There have been some complicated moments, both for individual, for my kids, but for the Somerville High. And as a parent, Sibby has been accessible and heartfelt and thoughtful and, and really looking at their perspective of individual kids and the whole student body. And that is a gift. But I will also say to our current students, you know, if you look at our equity policy and our hiring policy and we're trying to have our teaching staff, our educator staff look more like our students and have a pipeline. We say Somerville leads the way. In this case, Sibby has led the way. So if there are any current students who want to think about becoming an educator in our district, you have a very fine role model and I'm sure Sibby would be willing to talk to you about it and mentor you because some of our very best educators have come from our community or they appreciate our community deeply. So thank you on so many levels.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie, I appreciate it. And I've said this to students a number of times, whether it's assemblies, always in closing, like, you know, the sky's the limit. And you too could become principal someday. And I, I hope that some of our students are, become interested in the field of education and maybe would be lucky enough to have one of the fantastic students that have gone through Somerville, you know, be administrators and teachers and maybe someday a principal at Somerville High School as well.
Mr. Maza?
Thank you, Chair Green. Sibby, you know, I just want to say thank you. I mean, I did, a lot of my work was with you when, you know, I was principal at Winter Hill. And really, you know, I looked up to you as a role model to me in terms of, you know, your commitment to students, your staff and the community. You know, and when I transitioned into this role, you helped me better understand the whole high school experience from the redesigned work and the re-envisioning work that is happening with the Bar Foundation. And you know, I am so thankful that you were able to serve as many students as you have, you know, cultivate as many relationships as you have. I mean, I'll miss, you know, texting you in meetings just to see if I can get you to laugh. But again, I, I will truly miss you and being able to call and just ask you, you know, your advice on things. So for that, you know, I'm grateful.
Thank you, Chad.
All right, I'm going to call myself now. For me, the, the, if I try to think of like the one thing I most remember about Sibby is the pure, unadulterated glee you have announcing yourself as the first principal of Somerville High. For, for those of you who may not know, historically, the leader of Somerville High was the headmaster and head house masters. Through the work of the high school equity committee, I don't, I don't know if it's called at the time, but the relation was that, you know, those words have meaning in this society and meanings that we should probably try to get away from. And I just, for me, which is the, the glee, which we embraced that need. You know, as someone who, again, as their entire, functionally, their entire adolescent life at Somerville High, was just so gleefully accepted that need for that change and that growth. And I think that, you know, I think that is you in a nutshell, right? Like you are deeply embedded in Somerville High's history and tradition. But you took over school, as we were tearing down, you were willing to embrace the need to make changes. No, not just to the building, but to the educational program, to the culture. And you did that in a way that provided real continuity. So the new Somerville High, while a lot of ways, very new Somerville High, is still also the old Somerville High. I really appreciate you providing that continuity, that transition and adaptation.
Thank you, Andre.
I have, Mayor Carter, you have the.
I, I'm being brief because I know there'll be plenty of opportunities, Mr. Lagambina, to be on it and roasted. And I hope that we're embracing by that point because it has such a better effect or impact. I just want to give some context to people. Sibby, I believe the year you started teaching, I was a sophomore in college and was a permanent sub at Somerville High School. I remember you there. And I just want to say this because any, having grown up in Somerville myself and my family immigrated to Syria. I grew up here and I know Sibby's family goes back with that same type of lineage. And this community is welcoming to our families as immigrants. As Somerville in the late 80s, really was going through a lot of change. Immigrants coming to our community from different places, seeing this community as a, as a community of hope. There were many, and if even sense it today, who forget how hard it is an immigrant, who were resisting newcomers. But there were so many who've empowered this community, grew up here, who not only embraced new people coming to our community, but as, I'm Chairman Green, you just mentioned champion, the necessary change and evolution and how we, you know, how we not just, you know, epitomize a community that embraces tolerance and diversity, but is welcoming. Educators like Mr. Lagambina as well, and he, there are many like him. We've been blessed that he comes from Somerville and his family has roots as immigrants to this area. And he went to the Somerville Public Schools and the headmaster and principal, I'm sorry. And there were so many who maybe didn't resist, were so passive about it. But he was one of many who made sure that everyone felt welcomed. And he led with equity before it became a, you know, a, before it's something we speak of often. So I thank him for that. And my son, Sfaz, he says he's very lucky, he's had to have you there as a principal before he graduated. So many other times to congratulate, but I wanted to at least mention that this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, it's greatly appreciated, yep.
Dr. Ackman?
I wanted to thank Mr. Lagambina. In the short time I've been here, I've seen his passion and his dedication. I really just wanted to say, as someone who also wanted to be a high school principal as I was growing up and when I realized how much work it would be, decided to pursue another path. Really just want to speak from that perspective at my level of admiration and dedication to all that you have given to the city and our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Students, they want to be principals?
I got to be honest with Chair Green, it's a lot of work.
Thank you. We're going to wrap this up, you haven't retired yet, so you've got to get right back in tomorrow morning, so thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we will start public comment. I'm going to go ahead and read out the, the, our public comment script. So obviously, I want to thank everyone who has signed up for public comment. We had eight people sign up today. So because of that, speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. Those remarks should be respectful, professional, and addressed through the chair. If a speaker persists in improper remarks, the chair may terminate that individual's right to continue. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between residents of, residents of the committee. This committee will not reply to public comment in the course of a meeting. The individual meeting members may follow up and items from public comment may take them at future meetings. The school committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school committee in public session. Individuals may address topics on the agenda or items within the school committee's scope or responsibility, such as the district budget, goals, policies, or roles for intended. And the public is encouraged to submit comments and writing for inclusion in the public record. And I just want to, so we have eight people signed up. And I'll give the first three names and we'll keep going three at a time. So first, we have Kinga Burundi, Josh Burchard, and Amy Timmons. King of the floor is yours.
Hi, Kinga Burundi, 14 Landers Street, Somerville. In a meeting earlier this month, Ms. Phillips opened the door for discussion of personal loss. Thank you. I hesitated to make this personal, but I will take my minutes tonight to relate. But in the past week, my world has shrunk by three, thank you COVID. Helen Mills Allen, 88, Mimi Watson, we called her. She never missed a tennis match that featured my partner and cheered him through all his wins and defeats. She was a gentle old soul, always smiling and very welcoming to anyone who was new in her neighborhood. Jerome S. Klein, 87, Uncle Jerry. Uncle Jerry was a natty dresser, careful to show just enough cuff, just enough crease, and showed all his teeth when he laughed, and he laughed often, mostly at the stories he loved to tell regardless of who had heard them before. Uncle Jerry came to see us every day we spent at the summer camp house he once shared with his sister in South Dartmouth. He would come to say hello, enjoy a seat in the sunshine, and share a beer, a handful of peanuts, a sandwich or cheese and crackers. Uncle Jerry wasn't fussy, he just liked company. Uncle Jerry never came empty-handed, a five pack of beers, a sleeve of cola, an estrafalaria pair of pants multicolored that fit no one but was too cool and too kitschy to toss, a ceramic rabbit, scratcher tickets that he was sure were worth a million dollars, and the entertaining and interesting stories of his life. A Brown graduate, he was pilot in the US Air Force, constructed fence in Nova Scotia, and most recently was a docent at the New Macbeth and Wailing Museum. And then there's Tom Roca, whom I first met when his name was Tony more than 40 years ago. Yes, I am that old. Tom, cartoonist, humorist, television and movie producer. Credits include Los Falseros nominated for an Academy Award in 2002. Philip Prin, El Jueves. Tom lived large, loved well, and set a tone, set the tone for the satirical press of La Apertura, or the opening, that helped force the transition to a constitutional monarchy in Spain following the death of dictator General Sima Francisco Franco. His latest tome, a collection of 50 years of his work, Apaga y Vamonos, a fitting title. His death was a very big apagón. The world is a darker place now without him. I will miss them all. Also, I would be remiss if I did not take the time to urge the school committee and the city to provide free and fast internet, free and fast wifi to all city residents. Mayor Kurt Uton, you said financial resources are not an issue. So write that check, wire the city, make online learning accessible to everybody in the city, regardless of their citizen status. Make sure that all children who need to can access remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Burchard and then Amy Timmons and Katrin McDonald. Josh, the floor is yours.
Mr. Green, it looks like Josh is gone, so we will move on to.
Then we have Amy and Katrin and Never Duran. Amy, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Amy Timmons and I live on 96 Bartlett Street in Somerville. And my daughter is a 7th grader at the Argenziano School. I would like to first publicly thank Principal Soto and the teachers there for how hard they are working to keep the kids engaged in their learning and create a positive learning environment during this time of remote learning. It's not an easy task and I'm continually impressed with their dedication to their students and their care of them. I'm a teacher in a neighboring district and I understand how bringing students back into the school building, buildings is concerning for the spread of the virus. However, I also feel that once the building construction projects are complete and the scientifically-backed safety protocols are in place, this can safely happen. The school system where I teach has been using a hybrid model since September. With the school's reduced building capacity, mask-wearing mandates, and hand sanitizing routines, I have felt comfortable conducting in-person classes and have not gotten sick. I also want to applaud Somerville's proposed surveillance testing. Somerville's plan is actually more rigorous than the plan being implemented in my district. In my opinion, Somerville is going above and beyond to ensure the safety of both its students and teachers. And I hope that in-person learning will occur in the near future. Thank you so much for all that you're doing to make this possible.
Thank you, Amy. Next, we have Kat Katrin McDonald, then Never Duran, Leah Bloom. Katrin, the floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Katrin McDonald of 47 Madison Street. My comments are a mix of my words and those of Laura Hanley, MD at MGH, who is currently working right now. She's a mom of two kids in Somerville Public Schools. I am the mom of three children in the Somerville Public Schools, twin 9th graders and a 5th grader in the Anitos Program. I'm a single mother and an essential worker who has not stopped going to work in person. I have been dedicated to the Somerville Public Schools before my children even began in them. And now, after almost one year of poor communication and planning and no end in sight, I am regrettably planning on other options for next year. Families have struggled through the pandemic to piece together safe and reliable childcare and learning environments without important communication from the district and the city. Each request for better and more frequent communication from the district went unanswered. Each time a date was set, the goalpost moved and the date was canceled or changed. Meeting after meeting decisions have been put off. There has been limited and ineffective polling of families and no polling about what they would like for their children's learning environment for the rest of 2021, or even where in-house surveillance testing will happen this year. The challenge with our building seems almost like theater. We are not so exclusive or our building's so old that we have truly, that we truly had to do these things so differently than our neighbors who have at least had some children back in person. I understand there are many players in this chess game. However, the people most affected are our children and their fate seems to carry limited weight. Let us not forget that we are here exclusively because of the job of educating these children and that it is their fundamental right that we are making decisions about. In addition, there has been no community education about safety protocols and why families should indeed feel safe sending their children back to the school environment. I am grateful to Dr. Phillips' effort to have experts discuss the safety of in-person education. However, it is now the district's job to communicate that far and wide in multiple languages. The mental health of children is suffering. We saw this week that Las Vegas reopened schools because of soaring suicide rates. Children are suffering here as well, and yet we remain closed with no dates in place for our children in this community. We can do better than this. We have a top 1% safety plan and no children in school. Sadly, there are many families that are frustrated and genuinely worried about the health and safety of their children and now are opting to move, apply to private charter parochial schools, all for the much-needed benefit of having vital in-person education. We need communication, not just from the rest, for the rest of 2021, but looking forward to next school year. We have already received mixed messages from administration, staff members, and the union leadership. My question to you is this, can we expect our children to be in school full-time next year? We need to know this definitively and we need to know now. Without communication from our leaders, the erosion of trust among Somerville families will accelerate and enrollment will decline. Please help us by doing your part. Poll, educate, communicate, and listen to the science. And remember, we are here for our children's education, which is their fundamental human right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next we have Never Duran, then Leah Bloom, then Tara McCaffrey. Never, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Never Duran, 17 Kingston Street. Thank you as always for your hard work during this very difficult time. We need to reopen schools as soon as possible this winter, and I urge the city to make a public commitment now to schools being open full-time in person come September. This should be the default plan barring extraordinary circumstances. Somerville families need to know that September two thousand and twenty-one will be full-time in person, five days a week. Over the past six months, the community has lost faith that the city prioritizes children and families. The goalposts keep moving. All of a sudden, the optimistic dates are way past the pessimistic dates from two weeks ago. Despite being in the top one percent of mitigation strategies according to expert testimony, not one child has been in the schools for education purposes. And yet somehow the buildings are safe enough for after-school, at least for families that were rich enough and had flexible enough jobs to pay for two days of after-school that was canceled half the time. How on earth is that equitable? How is it serving the most needy or actually serving public education? The buildings are safe enough for after-school, they are safe enough for the small number of special education, ELL, and young learners. Families are moving out of Somerville. Many are sending their children to private school. Others are weighing the alternative for next school year, unsure if the schools in Somerville will be open. But not everyone has that option. The mayor claims to be committed to progressive values. Nothing is more progressive than a strong public education system. Despite the amazing and heroic efforts of our teachers, who have been given an impossible and thankless task, remote learning is not working. It is not an appropriate modality for young kids. Literacy is the essential building block of education, and yet young children like mine are stuck, unable to read, unable to advance, and simultaneously bored due to the unstimulating nature of Zoom school. They are acting out, and their mental health is deteriorating. It is heartbreaking to watch the system so utterly fail to these children. I genuinely look forward to the day when I won't have to attend every single school committee meeting in town hall, when I won't have to eagerly open each superintendent's email hoping of better news, and when I won't have to constantly advocate for Somerville to prioritize public education. I look forward to the day when I can just trust that my city considers education essential. Parents are nervously awaiting word from the city as whether and when schools will open. It has now been three hundred and twenty days without school for Somerville students. When will we get back to educating our children? Please commit now to opening in September for full-time schooling and reassure families that their kids will actually go to back to school ASAP this winter. Show them that the city of Somerville is committed to public education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Leah Bloom, then Tara McCaffrey, then finally Susan Lee.
Hi, this is Leah Bloom, one hundred and twenty-fourth Street. I want to echo what some of our other commentators have said about the absolutely critical suffering of.
Leah, you're having, we're having trouble hearing you. You're having this weird reverb effect.
All right, let me, let me, I'm sorry, I don't have this problem last time, too. I thought I had debugged it. I'm working on it, I promise, I'm so sorry.
All right, while you work on it, we're gonna take Tara and then come back to you later. Tara, are you there? I see Tara's around, but she doesn't seem to have audio. So then we will go to Susan, and then we'll come back and circle around. Susan Lee. Who's in there black?
Susan Lee is gone, Mr. Chair Green.
Yep.
Hi, can you hear me?
Just fine.
Thank you. My name is Tara McCaffrey. I live on Franklin Avenue in East Somerville. Thank you, Chairman and School Committee, for listening. I am the parent of an eighth grader at Somerville Public School, but I'm actually talking tonight as a teacher, a kindergarten teacher. I have been teaching in-person at an independent school in Cambridge since September. And it seems to me that Somerville is going to what I would call extraordinary lengths to return children to school. I'm seriously concerned that we are doing a huge disservice to our children that will have a long-lasting impact, particularly to the younger learners and those with higher needs. And so I think it would be helpful for me to share my experiences, given that I know they're different being in an independent school. I've been teaching in-person since September. Pre-K and K have been teaching in-person every day. The remainder of my school is on a hybrid model. It is very hard, but it is not impossible. The entire school is in masks all day, every day. Only staff and students are allowed in the buildings. We have frequent handwashing and sanitizing throughout the day. We teach with the windows open, with fans in front of or in our windows. We have plug-in standing air filter units. We have more outdoor time than is typical, and we have weekly testing for teachers and currently for the winter, testing for everybody. Everyone has their own supplies, and we have had no outbreaks in my school. We spend a lot of time ensuring that safety measures are followed and that we clean and prep all materials for children. We spend a lot of time prioritizing what can be taught in a day that is impacted by additional outside time and also additional transition time because of the safety protocols. I would say my kindergarteners are adjusting well and certainly better than I expected to COVID-style school. However, they continue to build their stamina for the day, for sitting, and for attending. I am seriously concerned for children in Somerville, especially younger learners and those with higher needs, who lost so much time last year and who this year, even in the best of circumstances, with excellent online instruction, adequate parent support, and adequate technology, both devices and internet, will do better in person than remote. And who also next year or whenever they return to school will also take an additional hit as they adjust to being back in school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's try, Leah, is your, are you think, you ready to try this again, Leah?
All right, any better?
Better, not great, but better.
My apologies, that's all I can do. I want to echo the concern of other commentators this evening that we need to know that our children will be back in school full-time, five days a week in person come September of two thousand and twenty-one. Many people have already begun to make other plans for their children for the fall because the goalposts have been moved so many times that we no longer believe that we can count on school coming back in person this year or next year at all. We've already seen across the country that school districts are declaring that they will only return hybrid or in fact that they'll stay completely remote come the fall of two thousand and twenty-one. And for our community, that would be devastating for parents and children. And the enrollment drop that we would see would have a bigger effect on our school budgets and on the quality of school that we're able to offer for years to come. I encourage the district to immediately confirm that there will be a school five days a week for at least students through the fifth grade, where we know that transmission risk is low and probably anticipate that all of the adults who come into contact with the students will be able to be vaccinated by September. I also want to say that there is a sense among parents and families in Somerville that because we are a small percentage of the population of Somerville, that our bases don't carry enough weight because we don't have as many votes when it comes to elections. And I want you to progress wrong. I want you to show us that our children, our students, do remember. And I encourage you not to try to appease both sides of the issue, the people who say kids should go back immediately and the people who say kids should not go back at all. This is a case of both, and we have solutions that are working for some students and families remotely. And we need to have solutions that bring our students, particularly our most vulnerable students, back into classrooms in person, face-to-face with teachers as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment. We are gonna take one more item out of order, and I want to thank, I want to thank the representatives of the AFC, AFC MC Unions for their patience. Superintendent Skipper?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have two representatives tonight. And so I will ask Leah Arundondo, who represents our clerical unit, to put her camera on, if she can, and Prabati, Prabati Rai, who is representing our food service. So, Mr. Chair, this is a celebration, as we normally do when we have contracts ratified. And so both of these units are ratifying for a three-year term. And so our custom is to have a representative just speak, say a few words to school committee and us to say it to them. So I want to thank both, both of these units for, you know, working collaboratively and coming out with a contract that I think members are really pleased with. And I know our district and school committee are pleased with.
Also, wanna, I also wanted to take a moment to thank you and your units and your employees for, oftentimes, you know, especially, you know, for both of you, you have worked in-person for most if not all of this year, and that is appreciated. We have, you know, we thank, want to thank you for taking on things that, you know, no one had previously been doing this year and doing it with grace and with patience and, and, you know, with attention to students. And so I want to show, you hear school committees, public thanks, thanks for that. And I am thrilled, you know, with the contracts that we have been signed and, you know, for, you know, began to work with you all for the three years. I'm gonna let, if you, if I have anything to say or something, I'll let you, then I'll turn it back over to my cousin in school committee.
Doesn't matter which one.
I just want to, I just want to thank you, everybody, for your support and looking forward to work in the future, too. Thank you.
I want to echo that and say thank you from our unit. And I want to send a special thank you to Joe Tringali, who is just the best. That's what I have to say. I don't know how we would negotiate without him. He's just got a lot of knowledge and he's a wonderful man. And thank you to the school committee. We're very happy with the package we've received, especially during this timeframe.
We are happy, happy to be, we are working with you. Ms. Norman?
Leah, that's so like you to, 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 to thank the unsung heroes. And Joe Tringali is just a man of integrity and institutional knowledge, and he would probably hate us praising him and thanking him publicly. But I'm glad that you did that. I also wanted to thank both of our asthma units. We were in negotiations and think the pandemic happened, and you all were patient and continued to come to work and in-person and do what you needed to do. And, and when we were able to reconvene to negotiate, you, you, you know, like you do your, your jobs, you jumped in. And, and so we are grateful for both the work that you have done, especially through this last year, which has been incredibly complicated, and feeding our kids. And I often think, you know, schools couldn't, they can't run without our clerical workers. And so that is also, I think, both your units are often the unsung heroes. And, and you are doing incredible work at the food service folks and often our secretary are some of the, the, the adults that our students have been able to see throughout this year if they're coming to the building. And so you play not just the function of your job, but you represent the whole district in person. And so with that, deep, deep gratitude. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from school committee? So if we were doing this in person, this would be the point where I, as chair, gets it, we get to seriously sign the contract and then invite you to seriously sign the contract. Since we have not, I believe that we have all given our e-conaches to Ms. Santiago to put on the documents. And so I will just say again, thank you so much. It's, you know, always a pleasure and, you know, glad that we could come to it, you know, that, you know, rewards you and, and, you know, compensates you for the vital work you're doing for our schools and our students, our district. And thank you for your patience, letting us get through all that stuff before we got to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if you, if people are with me, if I'm trying to figure out who are your audience in there, I believe it's me, our superintendent's report.
Yes. So two items in particular. So I'm going to actually ask Ms. Regina Bataldo to turn her camera on, who, as you know, is our Queen of Enrollment, at the request of school committee. And what we typically do is to give an update this year in particular with the pandemic. And since really last April, you know, we've had fluctuation within the school system with our enrollment. So we thought it would be a good time to give a snapshot. As you know, going into the budget, typically February to March, enrollment becomes a regular conversation at our facilities and finance meetings. And so that will hold true as well in terms of projections. For tonight, we really just want to give you a snapshot, which Regina's prepared in a wonderful format, which I told her is great. It's just, it's very easy to see the difference between twenty and twenty-one by school and then overall population. So that was provided in the handout. So Chair, I don't know if there's questions. That probably would be the, I'll have Regina maybe give a quick synopsis, and then we can take questions.
That sounds great.
Are we sharing that screen or?
Yes, we can give you the permission to. Santiago, would you be able to do that?
Yes, bear with me. I also have some technical difficulties on this side.
I just did it.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, let me try to, to do this. I can you see it?
No.
So I didn't, on the screen, is anything else I can do?
Now we can.
Yeah?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So what we have here, is it gone? Or you still have it?
Nope, we, we are good. Go ahead.
You see, if you scroll up just slightly, you can start with the brown. There you go.
Um, so this is a a comparison with last year. This was April last year, so FY twenty was April last year, and FY twenty-one was last week. As you know, you know, today the numbers are already different. It changes every day on enrollment. But I think that gives you a good perspective where we've had losses and gains during the school year after the pandemic. I don't, I am not sure if you want me to go in details. On the Brown School, we can see that there was a loss of twenty-three students from last year to now. And we can talk about the students who have applied for the one-year emergency waiver that the school committee approved last August. So some of these students will be returning. We also have, then Capuano, it's consistent on, on the K numbers, but that, you know, lost a substantial number, especially in pre-K, which was expected and we knew. Is Somerville has kept pretty solid. The school lost some kids on the enrollment, but it's pretty much, I would say, solid.
I think as Regina goes through this, the thing to remember- I think as Regina goes through this, the thing to remember is enrollment is, is both in and out. So we're also receiving students who are relocating to Massachusetts, to Somerville, just as we have students moving to other parts, you know, or moving out of state.
Yeah, and I wanted to reiterate, as I said before on previous meetings, that, you know, it's a, it's a very high mobility year as well. It's, especially immigrant families. They, they moving around and it's all around the area. From Somerville to Medford, we've seen a lot of families moving to Medford. But then from Everett to Somerville. So it's, it has been consistent throughout this year, very high mobility. And again, especially with the immigrant families. So we, Somerville is by school and and by programs. And what you see non, non-applicable is because the program is not held at this grade. The Healy has lost more students as well. And we could see the Healy, the Winter Hill. These are our families, our immigrant families. And I can say the same for Argenziano as well. Though that, these are the areas with a high mobility. The Kennedy has has kept solid and they have lost 14 students because this year we opened the kindergarten, the pre-K classroom there. And all the pre-K classes, they are not a full enrollment just because we know that for pre-K, parents experienced a little bit more of difficulty with four years old being remote. Argenziano has lost quite few students. Winter Hill again. And West Somerville has kept solid, has a plus five students. So I would say between Kennedy, West and East Somerville, they were able to, and we talked about this before, these are the schools that, that captured their enrollment. Even, even though they've lost some students, but they gained during the school year. And up to today, we still registering students for, you know, registration is ongoing for the current school year. Then we have next wave full circle, pretty consistent. Even the high school, it's pretty, you know, has a gain of eight students. And our enrollment is a minus 191 compared to April of last year. Any questions on this?
Well, I don't want to question myself. Dissection.
Thank you for that report as always. My quick question is just the schools that have the most movement are Argenziano, I think you said Healy. Are those the same schools that typically have the most movement in a non-pandemic year?
Argenziano, yes. And, and Healy on the lower grades. That's where we have sheltered English immersion program as well. At the Healy and the Winter Hill. It's usually, and then of course with, you know, with administration and no movement on the border. We, we stopped registering newcomers. It's more students who came prior to the pandemic, prior to, to the borders closed that, that just made into the country. And, and this mostly the population there, it's on this mobility movement. But I would say Argenziano, Winter Hill for sure are schools that experience high, my, high mobility even prior to, in prior years to the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's a lot of what I was going to ask. I, when I look at this, what I really see here is, you know, I, we know the kind of things we normally hear from, but we see where the churn actually seems to be. It seems to be our immigrant community, which speaks to, you know, national issues and also just the anecdotal things we've heard about. People, you know, especially these are families from the front line of COVID. Oftentimes going back home where it's not as, where COVID isn't as rampant as it is here.
And Chair, there's also, you know, what Regina has provided is an intent to return, which as you know, you know, we, we had passed the temporary policy to allow a placey holding for, for this year. So there's approximately 73 students that are on that. We've also anecdotally just heard from a lot of the pre-Ks that that is a grade that in particular, once we're back in person, you know, many of the families want to return. So, you know, I sit, you know, I sit with, you know, districts in, in the, in the urban superintendent's circle where the loss of enrollment is, it's substantial, four, 500 students. So I think, you know, what, what, what has been interesting is that with the students leaving, there's also been students coming in. And I think that just speaks to a real shifting of people moving, relocating, moving away for the year, coming back. So it really won't be, I think, until in terms of registration and in terms of the summer before we really start with the enrollment settle.
And it's very particular to some communities, this mobility. And I believe it has to do with immigrant population. I meet with other enrollment office directors and you don't see this mobility in Cambridge, in Brookline, in Framingham, that is no mobility. So it's really particular, but we experienced this in, in Medford, in Malding, in Lynn, in Revere, in Chelsea. So these are districts that we are constantly in contact. And we exchange our, you know, these experiences. We've started meeting as a regional since the beginning of the pandemic. So we could support each other and learn from each other. But we see that this mobility is not true for every community.
Thank you. Before I hand it off to more members, I just wanted to, I'd be remiss if I didn't, as always, thank Regina for her tireless work on behalf of the district. I normally call her the hardest working person in Somerville Public Schools. I believe this year you may have some competition for that title, but your, your efforts are always appreciated. And how much hard work on behalf of the district is always something we're here to stand before.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Ms. Bertoldo, I love seeing you. I am curious, before I ask my question, are we only talking about this year's enrollment? Or can we launch into talking about next year? Okay, Superintendent Sipper says no, I'm a.
Watch it.
Ms. Varish.
Thank you. I'm going to hold my question as well.
We will get into many conversations about projection i- as part of financing facilities to begin.
That, if I remember correctly, is, you know, wily old better at this point. That usually happens around March.
Correct.
Yeah, as you can imagine, we are eagerly excited by conversation this year, even more so than we normally are. But I see exactly, in the chart chat, I'm still going to say that if it's by next year, we wait till March. Ms. Norman?
Um, well, one, thank you so much for this Regina. And I, I have to say, this format where you have the two years broken out like this is so, 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 so helpful. In losing 200 students in, in these crazy times almost sounds like good news to me. And so in these difficult times, to be able to look at real numbers and have it broken down by grade in school and trends over time is so helpful to make decisions. And I know it was one more thing to do and it was another long day for you. But I, this is gold for informing a lot more of our decisions based on, on real facts and real numbers. So, um, thank you as always. And it's always good to.
Thank you. I just want to, to say that we started registrations on January 12th for next school year. And that has gone through such a smooth beginning. We have, so on the second tab there that I, I put the intention to return students, that is also a little synopsis of new registrations this year. And where we are with kindergarten and preschool. We do have some other grades registering as well. But we are off to a good start. The number is just fluctuating a little bit on K, but it makes up on the pre-K. So it's interesting, but registration is, is rolling out well.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further questions, Superintendent?
Thank you very much, Ms. Bertoldo. Excellent job.
Thank you, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
So, Mr. Chair, I am going to turn it over for a few minutes to Assistant Superintendent Mazza. He has several memos that he has placed in your packets. And he's just going to kind of do a quick summary and then take any questions.
Sounds good. Mr. Mazza?
Yes, through you, Chair Green. Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. It's always hard to follow Regina, but I'll do my best. So first you have in your packet is the draft of the school calendar for the 2021, 2022 calendar year. There's one potential issue that we do have that I'm going to explain to you and then request to move this to the next meeting because I want to do a little more research. As it stands right now, our pre-K and K students always start about a week later than our other students' grades, one through 12. Next year, when they start, it would be September 7th. The issue is September 6th through 8th is Rosh Hashanah. So students who would be coming to school for the first time potentially may miss the opening of their classrooms, not be integrated with their classmates because they would be celebrating their religious holiday. So what I'm asking is, I need to do a little more research with some other districts. One of the problems is we had come out so early with our calendar. Not a lot of districts really have sent their calendars to school committee for votes. But I want to talk to some area superintendents just to get a sense of, of what they're doing if they have a similar issue. Because I want to make sure whatever calendar we put forward is what's best for our students and families. So that was, yes.
And I grant your request to table, table the school, the calendar.
I appreciate that. The next thing you have in your packet is the Student Opportunity Act memo. If you remember, it is quite long ago, I believe. It feels like it's long ago. November 26, 2019, the act was signed into law. And it's a bill really for tackling inequity and how funds are directed to districts across the state by requiring more funds for school systems with higher percentages of low-income students and English language learners. If you remember, we received about $158,000 for that. And we were charged with coming up with a three-year plan, an evidence-based plan in accordance with general law. And the purpose of the plan was for school districts to address persistent disparities in achievement among student subgroups. As part of that, there are four commitments that we had to make. One is focusing on student subgroups. One is using evidence-based programs to close gaps. One is monitoring success and outcomes with metrics and targets. And the other is engaging all families. In your packet, in the memo, I get into more detail with what the commitments mean. And then there are two evidence-based programs that were identified by DESI that we are using with our funds. And the first is the Early College Program, focused primarily on students underrepresented in higher education. So for the next three years, FY21, FY22, and FY23, looking to expand our early college and dual enrollment with Cambridge College and Buckle Hill Community College. Really part, targeting students who are current or former, former English language learners as well as students with special needs. And it serves students district-wide. And so we have some funding for that. And the other, other evidence-based program is around really looking at our highest-risk subgroups who have been most impacted by COVID-19 school closure. Really in targeting summer and extended-year programming, again, serving students district-wide. We think these are the two best programs that will really assist our students. And it's the best use of the funds that we have. And honestly, I look forward to providing you many more updates, you know, in accordance with the Student Opportunity Act as we get further into FY21, 22, and 23.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Any questions from this? Seeing none, let's move on.
Uh, great. And so the personnel report, there were no new retirements other than Mr. Lagambina, who we celebrated earlier. Just two more quick notes from my report. I want to offer a special note of congratulations to Somerville High School senior Kevin Wen. Kevin was recently selected as one of the top 300 scholars in the Regeneron Silent, so I'm sorry, Science Talent Search Competition. He was selected from more than 1,700 applicants, representing 611 high schools across 45 states, Washington DC, Puerto Rico, and 10 countries. As a semifinalist, Kevin earned $2,000 individual award as well as a $2,000 award for Somerville High Schools, for the actual school itself. His project, which is titled, "Polystyrene Nanoplastics Spontaneously Enter Lipid Bilayers in the Blood-Brain Barrier." It's a good one.
Of course.
In which he's investigating potential severe health impacts that can happen from toxicity of nanoplastics in the environment. And that's all coming, of course, from climate change and the plastic waste. So just a huge shout out to Kevin. He also received word last week that the U.S. Department of Education had selected him as one of 4,500 candidates for the 2021 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. A selection criteria for this prestigious award includes outstanding academic and artistic achievements, leadership qualities, strong character, involvement in community and school activities. Candidates were selected out of nearly 3.6 million students expected to graduate from U.S. High Schools in 2021. Approximately 600 semifinalists, just 600, will be selected in April. So the Commission on Presidential Scholars will then select the finalists in May. So we really congratulate Kevin and his family for just some amazing accomplishments. And finally, just a reminder that tomorrow, we will be hosting another in our schools town hall online event, co-sponsoring with the city. Town hall for SBS staff will be held from 5:00 to 6:00. And then the community town hall will take place from 6:30 until 8:00. Information about how community members can participate in the town hall is available on the city's website, which you can look at the virtual town hall. We look forward to seeing you there and being able to provide you some updates on our reopening plans. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. So we have done new business item A. So business to new business item B, state guidance on flu vaccine. As Superintendent.
Um, so the state, we included in your packet so that you'd, the state has informed us last week that they would be changing their guidance and they would no longer be requiring students to receive the vaccination for, for March 31st. So if you recall, the previous guidance had required in order to stay enrolled, students to have that vaccination unless they were enrolling after March 31st. So this change in regulation does away with that. We have worked with the We have worked with the city and the Board of Health is going to leave its regulation intact. But since it refers back to state guidance, that means in fact that students do not have to show documentation for the flu vaccination. Again, we would encourage everyone to be vaccinated, especially during this time where it helps to separate out from COVID symptoms and it also helps with our hospital capacities. But we will no longer be required to document that with students for enrollment purposes.
Okay. Do we have questions from the, for the committee on that? Hearing none, let's keep going. So we have, we have some grants that need to be approved, so I'll entertain a motion. You can find it in your agenda.
I move we accept all federal entitlements and continuation grants and all state continuation grants awarded to the Somerville Public Schools during FY21.
Second by Eleanor Varish.
I, Ms. Varish, just, I think, to be clear, quick, real quick, the, the, the proposed grants are the Student Opportunity Act funds, which I don't believe we're actually gonna get, but okay. And the earliest childhood special education and special ed program improvement grants. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Superintendent, you call the roll.
Certainly, Dr. Phillips.
Yes.
Description?
Yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin? President McGlaughlin? Mayor Curtis Tony?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Varish?
Yes.
The Tone?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
And Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion on donations.
I move to accept with gratitude a donation from the Vanguard Charitable Organization by Gil Family Charitable Fund of Warwick, Rhode Island, in the amount of $1,000 to the Somerville Public Schools.
Is Emily second?
I have a motion by Ms. Varish, seconded by Dr. Ackman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Superintendent, you call the roll.
Sure, Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Description?
Yes.
President McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Curtis Tony?
Yes.
The Green?
Yes.
Varish?
Yes.
The Tone?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Do you have any other new business? Any items from board members? All right, hearing none. Vice Chair Cretson, do we have any condolences this, this week?
Yes, we do. The Somerville School Committee would like to extend our deepest condolences to the families of John Harris, father to Lorraine Height, teacher at the Capuano, and to the family of Dorka Franquez, lunch attendant at the Healy School.
We are adjourned, thank you everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, see you in the morning.
See you all right early.